Admitting of Starkville Board of Alphamont will now come to order. Lee Wright, Hussein, Fred Bligh, Atkins, Pastor Phil, Loveness with word of prayer, and move with her on the title. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Him and Father, we thank you for this, and we beg, we pause to recognize you in all of your majesty, your omnipotence, your omnipresent presence, and your omniscience. We pray now that you would crown, consider leadership of Starkville Mississippi with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to lead the city to great heights. We pray also that you would bless the citizens of Starkville Mississippi as we strive to live in such a way, and to cooperate in such a way, and to live with each other in such a way that you make it the Lord. Superintendent, this meeting will tonight be done decently and in order. In Jesus' name let me pray. Amen.
You have before you a copy of the written agenda. Are there any proposed changes to the agenda as written? You may.
The motion when you move under nine, Mayor's意見 item eight.
Your proposed revision from Alphamont Manor is to move item nine eight to the consent agenda. That matter is... Alright, that's the objective too, it will remain on the open agenda. Alphamont Manor, do you have further proposal to make?
Yes, sir. Under eleven, Alphamont Manor, move item B to consent. Yes, sir. No objection from the citizens in the public hearing.
Alright, so the proposal would be to move item eleven, B to G, to the consent agenda. And since that is a matter that requires a public hearing, ask for any comments now. Alphamont Manor, does that propose to make? Oh, yes. Alright, so what Alphamont Manor is doing is attempting to place the matter as the approval of the sign ordinance change, which would prohibit outdoor, non-seasonal lighting. And if he places that on the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is approved, then that matter will be a part of the agenda. Now, that is a matter requiring a public hearing, and a public hearing has been noticed. So at this time, prior to that matter being placed on the consent agenda, I will ask, is there anyone who wishes to comment on that matter? Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Alphamont's is ready.
Sanders, Starkville two. When I was going to church one day this past week, I saw that Deep South Pout has the type lights y'all were considering around one of their windows. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly how this has become an issue in the city. It might rightfully belong in that area that needs to be regulated. But I'm not sure either that what y'all are voting on tonight, what you're intending to vote on tonight, fully addresses this idea of non-seasonal lighting. I suspect I could, with a little bit of imagination, make it through the year with seasonal lighting. Bodyguard, St. Patrick's Day, Easter, Fourth of July, Halloween, on through. It's gonna be difficult to enforce. It's gonna be difficult to enforce, and you're burdening the co clients group with another enforcement. I just urge you to be sure that as it's presented, it's what you're hoping to achieve, and that you're not overreaching what your intent was. Thank you. Good luck.
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on that matter? Is there anyone else wishing to be heard?
We have some blind spots in the city that don't have enough lighting. People get hit because they don't see each other because they don't have enough lighting. They don't think about safety. Reach up. We have blind spots all around Starkville that we have made with two or three lights, but that people got doggy shot. There, that's not safe.
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on that matter? Anyone else wishing to be heard on ordinance change to regulate non-seasonal outdoor lighting? Anyone wishing to be heard? Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing no one, that matter is now eligible for consent agenda. Alphamont Manor, do you still wish to propose a revised, as the agenda parts out of consent?
Yes.
Is there any objection? Any objection? An objection? An objection saying none? That matter has been placed on the consent agenda. Alphamont Manor, do you have further proposal to make?
Yes, sir. Item eleven, Department Digital, B to H, first light the gears, any body gears set to speak on the public hearing for that ordinance as well. If not, I would like to place the approval of a second public hearing on consent.
Alright, this will be the same procedure as the matter we just covered. Is there anyone wishing to speak on proposed changes to the code ordinance, which would change the terms of office for planning and zoning commission matters? Is there anyone here wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak on that matter? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, that matter is now eligible for consent agenda. Alphamont Manor, do you still wish for that to be considered?
Yes, sir.
Is there any objection? Is the objection placed in that matter? Any objection? An objection? Any objection saying none? That matter has been placed on consent. Alphamont Manor, do you have further proposal to make? Any further proposed provisions from the members of the board? Alphamont Walker?
I'd like to remove item nine C, consent.
Alright, item nine C, the discussion and consideration of the annual fireworks show to be held in Fort July has been removed and continued. Alphamont Walker, do you have further?
Yes, I'd like to remove item ten E, consent.
Alright, item ten E, the discussion and consideration of removal of the condition of resuming tied to the Old Highway twenty-five mini storage project, AKA the Schrider Building, related to the thirty-foot buffer requirement, and release from the thirty-foot buffer requirement to allow for paving has been removed. Alphamont Walker, do you have further proposal to make? Are there any further proposed provisions from the members of the board? Alphamont Little, I hope you first deal eleven, I want... Alright, that matter will remain on the regular agenda. Little, do you have further proposed provision?
I do not.
Any further proposed provisions from the members of the board? Any further proposed provision? This is a public hearing matter. Yes, you do have one other matter that you have placed on your consent agenda, which requires a public hearing. That is item eleven, B to C. And that is a request for approval of a conditional use of a residence at nine oh five Louisville Street. And the zoning of that residence is C one, requires a conditional use, and for it to be used as a residence. That matter is only consented into currently. At this time, I'll ask for anyone who wishes to make comment on that matter. Is there anyone who wishes to make comments on that matter? Is there anyone who wishes to make comments? Seeing no one, the public hearing requirement is satisfied for that matter, and it will remain on the consent agenda. Are there any further proposed provisions by the members of the board? Any further proposed provisions to the agenda by the members of the board? Any further proposed provision? Seeing none, motion to approve the agenda as revised is an order, I vote. Motion has been made by Alphamont Carver to approve the agenda as revised. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alphamont Wayne. Alphamont Carver, do you wish to speak on that? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All of the table please sign by the saying aye?
Aye.
All of supposed please sign by the saying nay? Measure where we can. You now have before you the approval of the consent agenda. At this time, is there any objection to the approval of the consent agenda as revised? Any objection? Any objection? Any objections saying none? The consent agenda as revised has been approved. Votes that submitted that were presented to you have been placed on the consent agenda. We'll now give your announcement and comments by the mayor and members of the board. I have two tonight. First is, I believe we have some of our summer youth workers here. If you are part of the summer youth work program, if you please stand. And Ms. Benson is here on the part of Bill tribal planning and development district to administer our program. We are very, very pleased to have you here with us this summer. Some of you are recognized with you working in the office. Some are further probation, our paths have not crossed yet. But we hope you have a wonderful experience. We hope that you earn some money through your pocket this summer. And we hope you also enjoy serving and giving back to your city as our employees do. It is truly an honor to be able to do things that will improve the life of the place where you live. So, welcome, and we are pleased to have you here. And I'd now like to introduce our newest employee, Mr. Tyler Beardman. The utilities department, new construction rehab division recently hired Tyler Beardman as a maintenance worker. Tyler is originally from Jackson, Mississippi, but grew up in Webster County. He is a graduate of East Webster High School and attended East Mississippi Community College. Prior to joining the city of Starkville, Tyler worked for the Grenada Fire Department as a firefighter. Tyler also worked in construction for the last three years, operating equipment and doing construction labor work. Tyler is the son of Beverly Hester and has one sister, Bethany Sally. When Tyler isn't working, he enjoys hunting, fishing, playing with his golden retriever, Bella, and spending time with his family. Tyler is a member of the Euphora Church of Christ. Please join me in welcoming Tyler. That concludes my comments this evening. Are there any comments by the members of the board? Alphamont Wayne?
I want to thank Shangell Kelly of the police department. On Thursday night at about eight-thirty, I received several calls from my residents, Isaiah Langley, in regards to the gate that belongs to our city, which belongs to partial rent, being open. And as a result of that, lots of traffic was through the neighborhood. I want to thank Mr. Kelly and Captain Outlaw, who assisted me when I contacted them that night regarding that. Additionally, I want to thank Daniel Smith. On Wednesday night, I received a telephone call from someone asking that I check out a Facebook post that they were concerned about, that I need to be concerned about. And I checked that Facebook post on Facebook, and the person had stated that she had reached out to our city regarding a manhole, that the lid was off over there on Vine Street. I want to thank Daniel Smith, Mr. Best, and the crew over there at rehab. They did such a great job of getting that correct, of course. On Thursday morning, Mr. Mayor, by ten-thirty, they had done it. So I want to thank them, the yellow crew this night.
Are there any further comments by the members of the board? Any further comments? Any further comments by the members of the board? Are there any further comments? Seeing none, we'll move to citizen comments. At this time, any citizen wishing to make comments may do so by coming forward, introducing yourself, and you'll be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes. We've got two left, yeah? Looks like Mr. Turner's gonna be...
My name is Jennifer Holt Camp. I know a lot of you. I'm the director of the Starkville Public Library. And I just wanted to invite all of you all to come to the library this summer. Bring your kids. If you have grandkids, you don't look like you do. Nieces and nephews, we're having a great summer reading program, our first kickoff program. We had three hundred and fifty kids. So we want to encourage all of you all to make use of our great facilities. And just to give you a little heads up on our stats, we circulated in May, eight thousand seven hundred books. Looks like June, we may get ten thousand books for circulating. Our computers are in use constantly, and we have had about ten thousand patrons walk onto our Starkville Public Library computers. So, thank you, and come and support summer reading, and encourage your kids to read and learn during the summer, and have a lot of fun. Thanks.
Mr. Turner?
I have a turn of water, seven, I'm recognized by Nick Perkins, and you see Alphamont's ash. Thank you. We would like to give a head to the police department that this time of year is kind of hard on the member. You're in sometimes the voice, they get arguing with them. Yeah, that gets so, I would call community council, because most time when they see that gone, they feel like that you is a threat to them. So you best be case call community council, and they take care of that. Some concerns about, we have supported next month, you, the winter sticker be gone away with you, but we need some understanding, because we won't, anything chaotic to, with the police department, or even citizens after they're doing away with the winter sticker. The heat, working heat, we don't want none of our employees to suffer heat's pro car, hot tag working, trying to make it honest, uh, take them out of consideration. And also, Mr. West, he is telling that, well, I'm going with him, take care of this, and we just, we just like to give him space, don't give him a hard time, being in the June, being hard enough. I respect him and give him a respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Are there any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments?
Say something about one of the items, Sanders, Starkville two. I wanted to say something about the item that was taken off the agenda about the buffer requirement that y'all have been asked to waive. I wanted to say first, it is disturbing to see this trend of items being brought before the board without attribution. So we don't know who exactly is bringing this item to the board. If it is worthy, you're putting it on the agenda, it's worthy of attaching your name. And if more than one of you are bringing it forward, there's nothing that would have its heaven more than one name put on there. So I would encourage y'all to get back to that process of requiring a name to be attached to an agenda item. I also like to say that y'all voted on this issue back in January, and voted unanimously to require this. I think it's an important thing to have in place to protect the property and property values of the people who live in Deerfield, your ward, Alphamont Wayne, as this development occurs. It's a residential neighborhood, it was annexed into the city, there's been very little development. This is the first real change in that area in some time. And I do think it is important, and a beauty of y'all as a board, to do what you can to protect property values of residences, while you're also encouraging business development. So, we appreciate what y'all do in that regard. Thank you.
Daniel Alphamont's is ready.
Can I be recognized as Mrs. Sanders?
You have the board?
I represent Ward two, and Deerfield living part of Ward two. And I cannot tell you the favorable calls that I have got in regards to the project that they come to fruition tonight in the shrine of Hill. I have many relatives that live out there in that area, and they're glad that this is perhaps taking place, because before then, there were many types of functions that would go on, and they would hear music in their homes and do the magic. The residents of Deerfield are very supportive of this, and I've heard from many of them. And the residents of Deerfield are very, very pleased with my representation of this. As a matter of fact, the vice mayor called me a couple of Saturdays ago, told me that Warren had blacked on me in Cora. They're happy with their pavement down there, the entire neighborhood has been paved. And I'm very pleased with what is going on down there in that area. So, this project, if it comes forward tonight, hopefully it will be passed, and it's not disturbing our residents. Thank you so much, and I'm here for.
Are there any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Are there any further citizen comments? Seeing none, we'll move to public appearance. And we have one public appearance tonight, and by the Devon Mitchell Foundation. You will have a maximum of ten minutes to make your public appearance, and then I'll hear your questions, your comments that the board may have, after you've completed your presentation.
I'm Alphamont Mitchell, president of the Devon Mitchell Scholarship Fund Committee. And we're here today, we'd like to have a, go along, put on a Devon Mitchell Day. And we want to do this in memory of my son, his legacy, and to keep his legacy alive. We already raised two thousand dollars and gave away a two thousand dollar scholarship every year. And we've been doing this for three years, but we want to do more. We want to add to it. We want to have this Devon Mitchell Day in order to raise more, so we can give more back to the community. So, like the ones that stood up, they have a chance to win more scholarship. We're asking the city to help represent us doing this with in-kind services. And we would like to make this event annual, have this event every year. And that's why we come to the board.
Thank you, Devon Mitchell. Let me just say, first off, I didn't know your son personally, but I did watch him play football a lot of Friday nights, and really enjoyed watching him play. And I do know personally how he touches the community. There are many, many people like me who may not have known Devon personally, but were touched in a profound way by his life. So, I appreciate everything y'all are doing to see to it that legacy lives on and continues to touch lives in the future for this community. Now, as it relates to Devon Mitchell Day and the request for in-kind services, have y'all started the special events process yet?
We have, we have already, we may have met, and we talked in the sports place about June fifth, two thousand sixteen, starting that year from two thousand five, that first day.
And the way that process works, now, it's had the sports place feel a little different than if it's in a self-contained city venue, it may all be able to be handled by parks. But we have a general special events process, and that's where you make requests for in-kind services, and those requests for in-kind services are typically granted. So, I would think you would have a very strong possibility of getting your requests for in-kind services granted. But first, meet with Mr. Peters, have you done that already?
No, we haven't.
Okay. And then, after you met with Mr. Peters, we'll need to determine whether you need to meet with the community development staff to give the application for it. Please let me know after you're going through that process, if there's anything that you can assist.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments by the members of the board?
Exactly what the mayor said. I never met your son, he doesn't like football. I don't know what it is about him, but everyone that age was still with him was always positive comments. I guess I'll never know, I guess you do, but I don't. It's just one of those individuals in the community that no matter who it was, it was got a lot of friends and neighbors that were his age. I just always say very positive things, and still do to this day. One thing we do as a board, and I don't know, we'll have to talk about that later, is normally we just sponsor up to, generally up to five hundred dollars, either through ads or sponsorship or anything like that. But if it comes back and it's something that we can help you with, I mean, I'm sure we can help with that or in-kind service or whatever we can. But again, that's what you know about, his name is still mentioned a lot out there. There's got to be a good reason.
Alphamont Wayne?
Mr. Mitchell, thank you so much. This year, I think it was last month or May, you provided your scholarship to a high school student. And that student was hosted at my church by my pastor, Stone, and my cousin, Jelena, were in attendance at that. And I want to say thank you so much for all that he has achieved. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from the members of the board? Alright, the next matter before you is a public hearing on a resolution of the mayor and board of the city of Starkville, Mississippi, approving the adoption and implementation of the Tax Incentive Financing Plan, HPM Development Project, in the city of Starkville, Mississippi, and authorizing the issuance of tax incentive financing revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed three million dollars. I see we have the development group in attendance. Would y'all like to make an opening presentation?
Well, depending on the board, the public members, they will have had a rendering elevation of the two dealership that will be constructed, and then the site plan that they presented to the board for a day. For the record, my name is Chris Durris. My company is Durris and Associates. I'm here this evening on behalf of HPM Development LLC. On June second, we had a fair amount of dialogue before the board, making the request that the board set a public hearing and consider the request for tax incentive financing. The TIP plan that has been prevented, has been available for public review since the publication of the hearing notice a little over ten days ago, eventified at the twenty-five acre site, to be established at the TIP district. The project represents approximately twenty-five point six eight acres. As time to play, there'll be a couple of phases of development. When completed, will represent a private investment in excess of twenty-one million dollars, consisting of two dealerships, you see depicted here, possibly a third, some other mixed-use office, restaurant, and related uses as the project develops. Presently, the property has very low agricultural values on it, and generates very low taxes in its present undeveloped state. Seven dollars a year for the city, fifteen dollars a year for the county, nineteen for the school district. After completion of the project as proposed, it's expected that the city property taxes will increase by over forty-four thousand dollars annually. The county tax is a hundred and one thousand, and the school district a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars annually after the full build out of the project. It's important to note that there'll be many new jobs in connection with this development, around seventy jobs or so, the first phase, more to follow. I think the board members appreciate, and the citizens, that a lot of folks have to leave the community behind vehicles, and also have their vehicle serviced. So it's an exciting opportunity to keep Starkville, and I'll tip off county dollars in the city and county, and also attract dollars from outside the community, which will help grow and spur... which will help grow and spur additional economic development. The TIP plan authorizes up to $3 million in bonds, which will be paid back in behalf of the tax revenues of the city and county. Those bonds will be used for roads, water, similar drainage, infrastructure improvements in connection with the project. It's important, I think, for the public to know that the Greater Starkville Development Partnership recently passed a resolution in support of the project and its efforts. Those resolutions were sent here to the city, also to the county. We've had meetings with Ickellah County and made similar requests for their participation, and that is tracking along a little bit behind this process. We expect to have a hearing before the board is supervised. After favorable consideration, if it's the will of the board, you have other items. I kind of talk about now, hopes that we may address some questions and concerns. There would be consideration of approval of this TIP plan, then an interlocal agreement, which would outline the cooperation of the city and county in this endeavor, and then finally a development agreement. And that development agreement is really where the contractual obligation of the city and county come together. The TIP plan is a statement of the city's intent, authorizes the bonds, creates the district, is the development of prison where my client, HPM Development LLC, and the city really get hitched. And based on that development agreement, when my clients go out and create the development, start generating the taxes, then the city is obligated, you know, to use its best efforts to issue the bonds and reimburse in accordance with that plan. As we envision it, probably 18 months from now, it's a give or take, and we'll be knocking back on the door to say, you know, this amount of development has occurred, we'll have met with taxes at our office, work with the city bond council and financial advisors to actually identify the amount of the tax that's actually created, and make a presentation that the administration and its advisors, you know, will bless and endorse, and bonds will be issued at that time, you know, post-development. So, case in most gifts, my clients are taken to development and financing risk with the assurance that they deliver the project as described, and the city will be there to participate on the back end and reimburse them for parts of the investment in this process.
Are there any questions or comments for the members of the board? Alvin, where?
Say again, the amount of anticipated tax dollars for schools if this is developed out?
Yes, sure. We think the school district taxes arise about $20 a year to $130 per thousand annually upon school build-out.
I think it's important to note well, if this passes, the way, the school, I mean, we might cut it off from, from day one, the schools get 100% of that every year with that taxes.
Yes, Alvin, the mayor, and thank you for pointing that out sometimes I take it for granted, but the TIP law does specifically exclude school taxes from being realized. So, let's go over again, we should have pulled that up there for me.
I have to pay three to four full-time classroom teachers, just off that, for decent profit.
Any further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Chris. At this time, we will now hear any public comments on the Tax Increment Financing. Is there anyone who now wishes to make comments? You will have a maximum of three. Anyone who wishes to make comments?
It's midnight. I've been quiet for a while. I wanted to say thank you to the board for using a really good tool for a public private partnership and for setting a reimbursement rate for those bonds that protects the city's interest to do three variables when y'all do those TIP bonds. The percentage of incremental financing that is used for those bonds, the amount that the city keeps is the other half of that number, the total, the max amount of the bonds, and then the length of the bonds. You've done the handiwork thing, making a 50-50 share with the developer, and I think that's the way that these things should work. I applaud you for that, I thank you for that. And I hope it's such a successful project that the term goes down, that it's less than 15 years, that it's a much shorter term. So, thank you for using a very powerful tool to do something good and for protecting the city's interest at the same time. I appreciate that.
Thank you all, Chris Durris. Are there any further comments on the Tax Increment Financing? Any further comments? Any further comments? Any further comments?
If you put the, the horse, the house of the cameras, the seat, over here, just won't get Chris, he's got his shoulders down there. How he can do all those.
I'd like us, Chris, to just talk a little bit about the tiny difference between a TIP bond and a general obligation bond in terms of the residency, which is, which is one of the things that makes this such a good tool.
Sure. Under the law, the city has the authority to pledge the increased tax revenues from the 25 acre development, and that is the city's financial pledge and risk. It is not a full faith and credit pledge of the city, which in Mississippi is typically a general obligation bond. And what you see in the bond marketplace, if you're a TIP bond, if you're a general obligation bond, the $3 million or 15 years today might bring a 3.5% rate, you'll see a TIP bond trading slightly higher than that, 375, 4, 4 and 1/4. And the bond purchasers know that their only source of repayment comes from the revenues from the project. And that debt is, again, not a full faith and credit pledge of the city, nor does it count against bonded debt that says it's a revenue bond.
Thank you.
I don't want to bore you in the phone, the people are going to come in.
Are there any further comments? Any further comments? Any further comments? Seeing none, that will conclude this public hearing on the Tax Increment Financing proposal for the HPM Development. The next matter before you is the discussion and consideration of approving travel for Mayor Parker Wiseman to the 2015 Fiber to the Home Connect Conference and Expo in Anaheim, California, June 29th through July 1st, 2015, with advanced travel requested in an amount not to exceed $2,300.
I'm supportive of your travel there. However, tonight, I took that off of consent because I wanted each of them to be able to raise their hand, and rather than go out and tell their constituents, well, I have a good chance, I knew that they had to vote. So, I just want every Alvin to be able to raise their hands tonight.
Alvin Carver.
Oh, are you going in attendance, or are you speaking?
Yeah, I'm going in attendance. And let me tell you a little bit about the conference and what the Fiber to Home Council is. This is the primary organization in America that promotes all fiber build-outs, high-speed internet systems. And of course, this is something that we have chased for a while. And we now have two companies that are building out all fiber, high-speed internet systems here in Cispyre and Max South, just announced a couple of months ago, they were flipped. So, we're at the point now where we are realizing something that we wanted to achieve for some time. And one of the things that will be featured at this conference that I'm particularly interested in is talk about applications and opportunities that you have in community on these all fiber systems. We're at a point where we need to be thinking about what you do with it, once you have it, and how we make sure we're seeing the opportunities that we hoped we would when we tried to get these systems built. So, that's specifically why I made it to the board.
My second part was kind of leading into those. Are we meeting up threshold on enrollment? And do you foresee, I mean, do you foresee any kind of maybe a price decrease since the first company, and the second company that's now also bidding out? I just wonder how that's going to play in the marketplace.
It's going to be interesting to see. I think it is unlikely that Cispyre is going to change their model, no matter what Max South does, because Cispyre's launched the same program in several cities throughout the state of Mississippi. And they have made it fairly clear to all of the cities that they're going to do the same program in every city where they work. So, I think that makes it unlikely that they would modify their program. And we don't know what Max South's pricing for their program is going to be yet. I would anticipate sometime in the next two to three months, they will have an announcement about what their pricing looks like. Max South, since they're demoing this program here, and only here right now, they probably are in a position where they could be more flexible to what the market desires. And with respect to, I think the first part of your question, relating to demand and the pre-registrations, they both of them have different models. Max South, they're going to build everything in the city of Starkville with their system. Now, we don't know exactly what their system is going to look like yet because they haven't announced pricing at stake. Of course, Cispyre, theirs is a gigabit program everywhere they go, and it's only gigabit. But you take a gigabit or you take nothing from Cispyre. It is not going everywhere initially. Of course, the pre-registration process is their model, and we have four fiber beds. They cleared the pre-registration process out of 10. So, there's approximately 40% of the city that either currently has access to Cispyre system or it's being built now. Actually, we have one final area where they haven't started building yet, but they have qualified that area, and that's the downtown central part of the city. They have built and they are offering services. And the South Montgomery quarter, that included two of the areas that had the Timber Cove area and other, when they refer to as South Montgomery. And the third fiber hood is the Hiwashi fiber hood, includes a large portion of North Starkville. They are not offering service there yet, but they are building the infrastructure system now. They are still engineering the downtown system, and I would estimate that certainly by the end of the year, they should be building that system. Thank you. Motion has been made by Alvin Mayr to approve of the travel for Mayor Parker Wiseman to the 2015 Fiber to Home Connect Conference and Expo in Anaheim, California, June 29th through July 1st, 2015, with advanced travel requested in an amount not to exceed $2,300. Alvin Mayr, that motion just, do I hear a second? Motion has been seconded by Alvin Carver. Alvin Mayr, do you wish to speak on that? Discussion. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussions? Seeing none. All those in favor, please take a moment to say aye. All opposed, please take a moment to say nay. That's clearly passed. The next matter before you is discussions and consideration of a resolution of the Mayor Board of Alvin. Next thing before you is discussing consideration of the annual fireworks show being held July 4th at the Starkville Sports. Mr. Peters? Would you like to come forward and make a pre-presentation on fireworks show?
Our annual fireworks show, and for the last, I mean, 40 years, I know at least the last 40 years, I don't know how many years prior. So, we started around 4:00 p.m. We start setting up for company. This year, we have owner Peter Singers, Hot Dogs, Ice Cream, different people just coming in by the side helping us with the fireworks show.
Mr. Peters, I'm certainly looking forward to this event. I think this is one of the best events that we've put on as community, full of office in, mainly just because I want to be able to talk about it a little bit. Have you talked about it a little bit? There wasn't much in the package that described it, especially from a budgetary standpoint. How much money do we budget every year for this event, and how much is your budget this year for this event?
We budget for the entire fireworks show is approximately, I think it's $16,000 for the entire show.
We normally, is that normally, do we stay under that budget, or is that, is that what we have, 16, 16,000? How many, do we have any idea how many, how many participants we normally have a year? Or do we have to account of that, or do we anticipate getting a count of that, see really how much bang we're getting literally from our fireworks?
On the ground, I know we have over 1,000 people on the ground, but from the neighborhood and all over the whole Starkville basically area, and you really couldn't get a accurate count, but on the ground, it's over 1,000. Fireworks show in about, let me say, we start at 9:00, 9:30, we leave about 11:00, that's when we take all the cars to get out of here this year. So, people, the citizen looking forward for it every year. It's a great event, great family fun event.
Okay, that's what, that's what, that's the question I asked, is what are we budgeting for this, and what's the budget for this year? So, 16, 16,000, and we look to have a good family and an event to bring people out to the sports place to watch the fireworks when you like.
We have jumpers for the kids, so it starts, and it's crowded every year since I've been. We even do marriage proposed, you know, when you marry, we do those out there. It's not a joke, we actually do marriage proposed like that.
This is good. Motion has been made by Alvin Little to approve of the annual fireworks show being held July 4th at Starkville Sports. Alvin Little, would you like to? Do I hear a second? Question has been seconded by Alvin Mayr. Alvin Little, do you wish to speak on that? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please take a moment to say aye. All opposed, please take a moment to say nay. That's clearly passed. Thank you, Mr. Peters. The next matter before you is the discussion and consideration of a resolution of the Mayor Board of Alvin, the city of Starkville, Mississippi, approving the adoption and implementation of Tax Increment Financing Plan, HPM Development Project, City of Starkville, Mississippi, authorizing the issuance of Tax Increment Financing Revenue Bonds in an amount not to exceed $3 million and for related purposes. Discussion. Alvin Mayr.
Mayor, I move approval of the resolution of Mayor and Board of Alvin, the city of Starkville, Mississippi, permitting the adoption and implementation of the Tax Increment Financing Plan, HPM Development Project, City of Starkville, Mississippi, and authorizing the issuance of Tax Increment Financing Revenue Bonds in an amount not to exceed $3 million for related purposes.
All right, and the city attorney, and that should be heard.
Alvin Mayr, is your motion include exhibit A and B to the TIP plan as presented at the table? Thank you.
All right, motion has been made by Alvin Mayr to approve a resolution of the Mayor Board of Alvin, the city of Starkville, Mississippi, approving the adoption and implementation of Tax Increment Financing Plan, HPM Development Project, City of Starkville, Mississippi, and authorizing the issuance of Tax Increment Financing Revenue Bonds in an amount not to exceed $3 million, including exhibits A and B as presented, as presented in the packet, and those items as presented as presented. Alvin Mayr, that's your motion. Do I hear a second? Motion has been seconded by Alvin Little. Alvin Mayr, do you wish to speak on that? No discussion? Any? Alvin, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. City Attorney, let me make sure that I have a correct understanding of the documents I was getting quoted, so I don't get, you got a blueprint, you paint it, the placement on the table. Question is, if this matter is approved tonight, am I correct that this development will need to receive or retain 50% of the sales tax that collects Starkville District and 50% of the annual taxes of the TIP district for an unspecified time period up to maximum of 15 years for each issuance?
Correct. When you say each issuance, you're saying there are multiple issuance, I guess so.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, distinguished colleagues, members of the public, let me just say very briefly, I have given a lot of serious consideration to. let me just say very briefly, I have given a lot of serious thought and consideration to this matter. I certainly want to thank the developers for wanting to come to Starkville, Mississippi. Starkville, Mississippi is a very good place to live or learn. I have consistently an opinion, been in favor of pro-business. I am still pro-business. I am pro-growth. I am pro-economic development, and I am pro-community development. I certainly wish this development real well, and I hope the effort is essential. However, I cannot support this matter, this support board this time, nor the other two matters that will arise, so I will not speak again on these matters. This particular matter, as I got confirmation from the city attorney, will allow this development group to retain fifty percent of the sales taxes that are collected in this Tiff district for a period, no time that is unspecified, and up to a maximum of fifteen years for each issuance. If this matter is approved tonight, it not only allows this development to retain fifty percent of the sales taxes collected for this Tiff issue, but it also allows this development to retain fifty percent of the act of oil taxes for this Tiff district for an unspecified time period up to fifteen years for each issuance, if there is more than one issue. That is a reason, the second and final thing I want to say is that it is my personal opinion that is another, this is what to come up and ask for this same or similar arrangement. Then I would have, in my opinion, a very difficult time of saying no to this business that may come. It is very important to me that I treat all the businesses that are similarly situated similarly. There have been others who have come and, as I said, and we welcome all business, we are open for business in my opinion, since we have a very good business climate. I'm going to continue to do that. I have done that for almost twenty-two years for the length of time I have been at this table. And I think that there are others in the city who have been here for a time period that opened doors, and they were able to do this without the Tiff arranged. So I just have a hard time calling out the exception here for one group. There's no disrespect, the proposal looks, it obviously will be good for, for business climate, but I'm not in favor. And I say it very, very respectfully, and I just want to thank everybody involved for bringing this to Starkville, but I'm just not in favor of this business arrangement. So allowing up to fifteen years for fifty percent extension of our own sales taxes, but also the act of oil taxes. Now, the school money is good, I appreciate that. It's always good to support education. I'm a strong supporter of education. I have been a strong supporter of, personally, the Dallas Mitchell Foundation. My family have been giving this scholarship for the last fifteen years for, for education. But at the same time, we'll continue to support education. But I do not think from a policy point of view that this is the right approach for this. I just do not feel that this is the best way conservatively to handle the taxpayer's funds. So I just would have been remiss in my duties and my opinion if I had not said that. So I'm just satisfied now that I have shared that with you. I think that the vote at the last meeting when you were here, I read the documents carefully, went a little bit further than a public hearing, but, but this is it. So, you know, I know the scoop is, aren't you going to the vice mayor? Because I understand on January 24th, it'll probably get approved there, probably get approved here. But when, but after the vice mayor, I just want to be on record. And I'm going to be consistent, so I want these developers to know respectfully. When the next group comes here, I'll give them the same, same call. So at least you'll be able to say that the vice mayor is consistent, and he's going to have the same philosophy, the same opinion. And if it's ten years from now, however long it may be, if I'm still here, whatever it may cost, five years, or four years, or another two years, whatever, I'm going to be the same approach with this. So, Mayor, I just wanted to say those things. And I'm not going to sit here in front of the recognition tonight on these matters. And when the roll is called, I'm going to be recorded voting nay on this matter and two succeeding matters. And I just want the record to deal and reflect, the vice mayor is taking these moments of personal privilege, not only speaking on the pending matter, but the vice mayor in great respect. I want to thank you all for wanting to have an idea of making this talk, but I'm just not in agreement with your financial approach and your financial analysis. You know, while requests come due on this table about twenty-two years. But nevertheless, I wish you all the best of success. Mayor, you have the floor.
Further discussion. Alderman.
First, Mr. Parker and HPM representatives, I want to thank you guys for your willingness to make an investment in our community like you're willing to make. It's a, it's a huge investment, and we definitely appreciate it. If I recall the numbers, seven dollars is what they make a property generate for the city roughly. With the improvements, that oil taxes go up to around twenty-four thousand. We anticipate when it's built out to bring in around four hundred and ten thousand, I believe, total of the sales tax revenue side. There are not many businesses that sell the durable goods like you're going to be selling that can bring in the tax revenue that you're going to be bringing in, or maybe a water. Tiffs aren't new, they've, they've been around, they've used by multiple municipalities around the state and around the country. In my opinion, I think it's a good deal for the city. Correct me, Mr. Bruce, if I'm wrong, but these bonds will have to be underwritten. If you build and your estimates are wrong, and you don't, it doesn't go gangbusters and sell and generate the revenue like you had anticipated. I'm hopeful and optimistic, I think you're going to be correct. That the bonds may not be underwritten, right? If something went south, that's possible.
That can be a possibility, and, and your development agreement, which you'll consider later, if we get that far, has some checks and balances where, you know, the city will go forward when it, its sole stretch is satisfied with the number.
And when it gets to that point, I think, as Sis took it earlier, if it goes gangbusters, it could pay out late, for a smaller amount of time. Am I correct?
There's a, there's a provision in the plan that's presented that talks about the city being able, at the appropriate time, to make the decision about how much money to borrow, how long to borrow it, pursuant to further proceedings of the city, once you have good information. And your point's very well made. We believe our numbers are est, are conservatively estimated, and if it's doing consistently greater, when we bring forth the revenue numbers, you'll have the opportunity to say, well, can this be on a twelve-year term, a ten-year term? Because you'll make those decisions as a board every eight months.
And that's up to $3 million, but if it ends up being 1.8, that's the, that's the amount, the Tiff, correct?
That's correct.
Well, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of it, and I respect the vice mayor's opinion on this. And if there were another dealership that would be able to build it, they'll be in town next week, I would certainly entertain a similar process if they would come, come and visit. So it'd be consistent, my prediction. Thank you.
Further discussion. Alderman.
I agree with a lot of what Alderman Little had to say right here. I think certainly happy for, for this development to be potentially coming to town. I think Tiff is about as low risk as you can get for taxpayers of Starkville. The risk is essentially all on the developer. Approximately, just looking at the scale of this drawing, it looks like you're going to be building roughly somewhere around fifteen hundred linear feet of what will ultimately be new city streets for Starkville. About fifteen hundred linear feet. Edward, what are we, what are we looking at for a mile of road these days?
One fifty, probably.
Okay, so substantial investment just in road and, and other infrastructure. And again, what the, what the Tiff covers are essentially infrastructure costs, roads, drainage, and the like. And we're talking about a twenty million dollar project or so. So low risk for the city, almost no risk for the taxpayers of Starkville. I think this is certainly a win for us. Would I like for the city to be able to get a little bit better deals at fifty-fifty? Sure, sure. But having, you know, what's the saying, a bird in the hand or two in the bush? This is a, this is one in hand. This is a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for the school. This is going to be approximately, if everything goes well, looking at $200,000 additional revenue for the city after the fifty percent goes. This is a pretty easy, this is a pretty easy decision. And to be consistent, if we have developer after developer that comes and lines up, and they have twenty billion dollar projects that are going to be long-term contributed to our, to our community, yeah, I'm willing to do a Tiff on every single one of them for, for that amount of money. Because that's how you build community. That's how you build a tax base in a community, so you're able to go out and fix the potholes in the street, or fix, fix the drainage problems that we all have on our walls, without having to do general obligation bonds to be able to do that, that costs the taxpayers. So this is a low-risk investment, it's all on the developer. We are so glad that you have stuck with us to, to try to see this through, and I'm looking forward for you to turn dirt and start selling homes.
Further discussion. Alderman.
Members of the HPM Development Project, sometimes I, I love a win-win situation. This is a win-win for our city. My background is in education, this is a win for our students, for our school district. And I want to say thank you so much for believing in our city, and I look forward to your dealership and the preparations and not. I look forward to it being out there on the bypass. Thank you so much.
Further discussion. Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, saying none? All those in favor of Alderman Maynard's motion, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? By vote of five and favor of one against, this measure passes. The next matter you have before you is a discussion in consideration of a resolution of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, adopting and approving, authorizing the execution of the annual cooperation agreement with October, Long County, Mississippi, in support of the HPM Development Project. Motion has been made by Alderman Little to approve of a resolution of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, adopting and approving, authorizing the execution of the annual cooperation agreement with October, Long County, Mississippi, in support of the HPM Development Project. As per Alderman Little's motion, it is, do I hear a second? Motion has been seconded by Alderman Lynn. Alderman Lynn, do you wish to speak on the matter? Any discussion, any discussion, discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By vote of five and favor of one against, this measure passes. Next matter you have before you is the discussion in consideration of a resolution of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, adopting and approving, authorizing the execution of the development reimbursement agreement, reimbursement agreement with HPM Development, LSC conjunction with HPM Development project tax increment financing plan, and authorizing the city to make reimbursements from the bonds issued for the tax increment financing. Discussion. Motion has been made by Alderman Little to approve of a resolution of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi, adopting and approving, authorizing the execution of the development reimbursement agreement with HPM Development, LSC conjunction with the HPM Development project tax increment financing plan, and authorizing the city to make reimbursements from bonds issued for the tax increment financing improvements. As per Alderman Little's motion, do I hear a second? Motion has been seconded by Alderman Lynn. Alderman Lynn, do you wish to speak on the matter? Any discussion, any discussion, any discussions, saying none? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By vote of five and favor of one against, this measure passes. The next matter you have before you is a discussion in consideration of a removal condition of rezoning tied to Old Highway 25 Mini Sports Project, AKA triage building related to thirty-foot buffer requirement and the leaves and thirty-foot buffer requirement to allow payment. This matter requires a public hearing. Vic Sanders, we'd like to try a brief introduction.
On January 6th, this year, Mr. Moreland, the property was rezoned R3 multifamily to C2 rental business, placing mini storage facilities on this one section of property, with the sole condition being that a thirty-foot buffer could be allowing the southern, southwestern part. It is Mr. Moreland's desire, I believe, that this is fine.
Questions, comments from the board? Any questions, comments from Mr. Sanders from the board? Any questions, comments? All right, seeing Alderman.
So on January 6th, this was brought to the board and passed with that condition. That is correct, yes. Is it, it's typical that when you have C2, the adjacent property to the south is residential? R1? R1? R1. So we have C2 with R1, R3, zone residential, the requirements of the city is typically that there is a planted buffer requirement as part of that, correct?
Thirty-foot buffer yard is a requirement for our landscape.
And the reason for that is to help mitigate what would potentially be incompatible land uses from being adjacent to one another.
That is correct, yes.
And so what is the, as the, looking in the packet, the reason I pulled this off consent is, at this point, it's already been rezoned. If we're talking about, is this project going through the design review committee? Are there drawings for, that, that should have been part of the package that we can see was actually being proposed, and how that design may or may not need this by?
That applicant has been through the DRC development review.
And what are the, what were the recommendations to have?
Essentially, the buffer yard or landscape plan for our city's landscape requirements to be required, stormwater, kind of, to be aesthetic, and also system paving of the right part of the block to be required.
So that process is ongoing, is what I'm hearing, and out there should be a couple more steps to, to sort resolve those matters before coming to the board. But tonight, we're dealing with the, the buffer yard matter.
That is correct.
Since there was no plan in the packet, I went and looked, I went to the office today to look and see what the, the plans are. And I got to say that despite what the, the folks at Alderman Lynn may have talked to, and those are her people out there, and I respect that, I think this sets a, a, a little bit of a precedent. What we're going to be, what you're looking at, if you look at that south end, if you look at the proposed plans, are mini storage units, concrete, all the way around. No, I don't think anybody's going to argue that mini storage units are the most aesthetically pleasing development that, that's going to happen. I think if there's anything that we're talking about incompatible land use, it is mini storage units up against residential units. I think my constituents would certainly be, I would be expecting to have some manner of mitigation between that further ordinances that we have in Starkville. That's why we have them. I think it's also important, and this is incumbent upon the applicant, to make the request for why they need the relaxing or the removal of that. And I don't think, so far, I don't think that's been presented, other than they don't want to do it, or maybe they don't think they have room to do it. But I think there's certainly room, looking at this site plan, to accommodate all of the buildings that Mr. Moreland is proposing to build, and accommodate the thirty-foot buffer. In fact, on this plan, they're even showing room to have a thirty-foot buffer. So I, I'm not sure why we're looking to, to, to have this buffer removed, other than not wanting to, to, to meet the requirements that this board passed humanely in January. So thank you for, for bringing this forward, and hopefully helping explain how, how we got, how we got to this point, and according to the rules that we all have established on what we voted. So we're talking about So, we're talking about being consistent. Here's the opportunity to be consistent. Looking at if there is a true need for that buffer to be reduced in some way, what is it? Has that been presented? And maybe we might have the opportunity to amend it for Mr. Moreland or someone to explain why that buffer should be reduced. And I'll be more than happy to, to listen to that report.
Any further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further? Alderman.
So, is there some sort of notice procedure from the residents? Have this changed?
Yes.
Is there like, you mailed a letter or what?
Finding his own condition. In back in December, a letter was sent out to residents of the property line, the central parcel, a sign was placed, and there was specifically given paper. The same process went forward for January the sixth for Alderman meeting and also the specific for this year's night.
Does this change, including the language?
Yes.
That's simply getting what has changed. Did you get any feedback from any of the, did you get any feedback from the rest?
I did not have. We've seen. We'll call about a question. Just wanted to know, call about an opinion for.
Alderman. Mr. Sanders, after this was approved in January by the board of Alderman, and this may be more directly for the city, right? Isn't there a, a two-week, fifteen-day period for the applicant to reject the conditions that were placed on that or appeal that condition?
Two days.
How many?
Ten days.
Ten days. And was that received in a timely manner?
We received that request.
And so, now we're talking about five months later, this coming back after it succeeded, again, the city policy on who you can appeal that type of matter. And I'm not sure why that's being presented tonight if that term is already expired.
It is, it's been expressed by Mr. Moreland that he desires to remove the conditions placed paving around, wanting to be storage unit.
City attorney, is if we've exceeded that ten-day limit that we would be expecting for other applicants to have, and now we're some five months beyond remove from that date, should this even be able to be considered at the table tonight?
It falls within the board's discretion. You can consider it or you can hold him to the ten-day rule. It's totally discretion.
So, it's up to us to keep our rules or make them up as we go along, depending on the, the, the project.
Since the board attached this condition to the rezoning, it does fall within the board's progress on how it wants to deal with a request of reconsideration of this condition.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from the board for Mr. Sanders? Any further questions?
I don't have, let me say this, I have been, questions for Mr. Sanders. But let me say this, and thank you so much for mailing my residence after that letter regarding this project. The reason that you have not received any telephone calls from them, because they are very receptive to this project. Before the shrine was used for the idea of social gatherings, and you could hear the noise from that building over there in the west side neighborhood. Right now, because nothing is there, we don't hear any of that. Many of the residents of the different community are retirees, and that, my, this is essential for them. They are very supportive of this project. I wrote to my colleague about two weeks ago, and she said, "I will trust that Mr. Moreland will do right by our neighborhood." And I believe that he will do right. For that reason, I'm going to support this tonight. Mr. Moreland, I have the motion ready and I'm ready to go.
Got to go through the public hearing.
I'm sorry.
Any further questions or comments from the members of the board for Mr. Sanders? Alderman.
I understand this was a non-profit. The shriner's that owned this building, it's a break-in asshole, burned out hole out there of the, it had not been on the tax roll, didn't have non-profit status.
I do not intend to add that.
That is accurate. This was, this was a non-profit facility prior to Mr. Moreland's activity. They invested in this structure, they anticipated structure, they wanted to enhance what was a burned-out shield, it's been sitting there for a while with no tag, you know, taxes. And now it's back up the board's account. And my understanding that the other residents are paid to.
Are there any further questions or comments from Mr. Sanders from the members of the board? Any further questions or comments from the members of the board?
Mayor, I might have a chance to say anything?
I'm getting to it. Now that the applicants have switched to make their comments. And Mr. Moreland, you will have a maximum of fifteen minutes to make any presentation.
Well, first of all, the fifty-foot, that they come up in the January meeting when they were picking, what I'm asking for is that was six tenths of a acre that you, if you take fifty feet off of the east side, fifty feet off the north, the south side, fifty feet off of the other side, uh, the south side, I mean, west side, got a power line going across, it takes up to six tenths of an acre, just about. I've been to ten, eleven meetings on there, and every one of them ended with, I understand what you're trying to do, but the only thing, and only people that can help you is the Board of Alderman, and that's why I'm here. But I have no problem at all with the buffers on it. We're going to be landscaped around there. Then, what I want is the road, the twenty-foot road to be part of the thirty feet, so I can be, it's going to cut out a building. And that property, when I bought it, was burned out, it was an eyesore, it was grown up, it's the first time I could it, rats run across everywhere. I've been, police arguing, cutting, moving it, getting it. It's going to be something to be proud of. I've got probably fifteen to twenty thousand dollars in just fence around the front. Now, I think we'll cycle, but I want you to look through it. And it wasn't on the tax roll, and some of you are talking about taxes and this, that, the other, but some of you don't understand taxes, apparently because we're trying to keep down something that's going to be taxed. Now, I know Alderman Walker, we're going to be against it. Anything come up, doesn't matter what, I'm going to give you all a million dollars.
I'm pretty sure I put his quarters rezoned.
Mr. Moreland refrain from directly calling out members of the board. Well, one member. Mr. Moreland, present your project.
But all I want to do is have the fifty feet, I mean, the thirty feet around the thing and have the road involved, I mean, into the thirty feet, so I can continue the project. The only other pro, uh, alternative I have is set it back to the shrine blue, then it'll be no back. But, uh, that's all I have. I, I need, I have a building on the ground down there, trying to get it up, and it's still laying there on the ground. But it's, it's just something, it's, it's going to help the people down there. I have not had one person come by, say anything about it. It's going to be nice, it's going to look better than any of the stuff around in that And I just think it's, that y'all will be doing a city and industry if you just.
Thank you, Mr. Moreland. At this time, is there anyone wishing to speak against the proposed changes? And those wishing to speak against will have collectively fifteen minutes and a maximum of three minutes per person. Anyone now wishing to speak against? Anyone now wishing to speak against? Anyone wishing to speak against? Seeing no one, I will conclude the public comment portion of the public hearing. Now, we'll move into discussion, all items, and then is eligible for adoption. Alderman.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear here is, Mr. Moreland just talked about fifty feet. I haven't seen anything in any of the language that I've read requiring anything of fifty feet. The only language I've seen says thirty feet. Mr. Sanders, is it a thirty-foot buffer or a fifty-foot?
It is thirty feet. It's seventy-four feet.
So, is that just an inaccurate statement that we've heard to this board? If I, what I recall voting on in January, that I did vote for this rezoning of this property, which I did vote for, because I think there is a better use for the property, and I'm okay with putting many storage units out there, I just think it should be buffer. Most of the residents probably don't think they have a, a problem with it, because most people can't look at this and tell you what I'm looking at. But I, I would wager that when they build many storage units, a lot of them at the end of the day may say, whoa, I wish I didn't have to look at that every day. Hence, the, the need for a buffer between a commercial zone and a residential. So, thirty foot is the, is, was always been required as well as the condition that was added, that this board unanimously supported, if I recall, and now we're looking to get that reduced to zero buffer?
Potentially like that.
Potentially zero buffer. I, I think that's a rule. So, so what is the, what will the buffer requirement be if we're trying to get this removed from thirty feet to, to what?
It would be up to the board.
Would be what?
It would be up to the board.
Up to the board. That, that's interesting. I think it was just, we had a funeral home in here, the last, last meeting we had, and they had a list of conditions, a, a full page, laws about that, that they had to, to deal with. And that was substantially dealt with screening. And there was a little bit of discontent, didn't want to have all that screening, but at the end of the day, this board decided to support that because it's the right thing to do. If this was right by your property, you would want a screening for that. And this is going to increase the, the taxes, and that's great, but at the end of the day, this is parking for RVs and many storage units. This isn't going to make or break something. That's, that's just, that's just how it is. I think at a minimum, I don't think what the city is requiring of every developer in this situation is to meet the landscape ordinance, to meet the stormwater ordinance, and to follow the rules of development that we have set forth as a city. I don't think that's too much to ask, and I will not be supporting removing this buffer because I think it's, I think it sets a bad precedent. And I think it's not the, the best thing to, to do here. And I'm sure that the, the votes are, are going to be here to approve this. Mr. Mr. Moreland believes that the votes are here to approve it, and I'm sure he's right. As he stated at a meeting at the, with the DRC the other day, that he didn't know why he had to go through this process, but he already had the votes bring it to the board. We'll see in just a few minutes if he has the votes or not. I'm sure he does. I think it sets a bad precedent, sets a very bad precedent for our community. If you look at this buffer requirement and you don't allow them to, to stick by that, that is very unfortunate.
Further discussion? You may.
What other processes, this has to go, I'm very strong on the hearing board, what else has to happen?
Yes, there are, there are three other meetings that are set for, to take place between now and July seventh, that's being ordered to fulfill the stormwater relief board and the free of by report or ultimate on, um, further delay. More than checking.
As to the stormwater, just kind of give us an explanation for this, excuse me, give us an explanation as to the storm, the board of death, and the other matter, what's going on, and how does that relate to this tonight?
Yeah, well, it, it all relates to the same site. The, the, this item is coming forward tonight at onboard business, it was requested specifically by Alderman that we, that we hear what was right and properly heard as relates to this case tonight. This matter was properly noticed and was available, was available for the board to hear, and so, and so it was placed on onboard business by Alderman. It relates to the stormwater relief, it's being, it's being sought. Edward and Daniel and Buddy, jump in at any point here, because I'm shooting from here, and you guys are professionals, so look at this. But Edward, as I understand, we're seeking relief on stormwater as it relates to the calculations and detention, basically, we're asking for relief from having to put in detention to use what's already in place, correct?
Mr. Moreland has asked for a variance from the stormwater management ordinance. As, as it relates to, to landscape, Daniel, we're seek, the, we're seeking relief from, I think it's basically from plant counts, as we understand, is that for plant unit count?
Nothing specific has been listed yet for that, where it was led to, in my opinion, were all required.
Okay.
With regards to the thirty-foot upper yard, I'm sure. Would like to address the board if they so choose to. And then as it relates to adjustments, to board adjustments in the field, then what are we looking at?
That is in dealing with the gravel part here, that would be in front of the building, that is not part of the C two.
But board, I, I'd like to offer, as, as it relates to those, to the items not before you tonight, those have not been properly reviewed by your, by your established boards and commissions. We have scheduled meetings to hear those items specifically, to, to have them ready to present to you on the seventh. But, but this one is ripe for your consideration tonight, should you so choose to move that.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanders, if you have any comments?
You may.
Moreland, I'm only speaking up in the interest of accuracy. There was a misstatement earlier, and I just want to clarify that. And it goes to some of the challenges of Starble zoning ordinances, because they're differing on a rezoning than they are on a conditional use. The appeal time on a conditional use is ten days. The appeal time on a rezoning is five business days. But here's the key, more important than that. The appeal time runs between the P and Z and the Board of Alderman. There is no appeal time written in Starble's ordinances to appeal a Board of Alderman decision. So, if the board chooses to act tonight, it's not going to act in contravention of its own ordinance. Just wanted to say that for the record.
Further discussion? You may.
Mr. Moreland, what, what are you planning to do from a landscaping perspective on the property?
I want the thirty feet with the, the landscaping will go around it probably about five to ten feet now, with the, all I'm asking is the road to be in the thirty feet. I'm still, everybody got off track a while ago. I'm not asking for a zero to do away with the string thing. I plan the landscape around it, but I want the thirty feet to include the road around the outside of it. If you make it thirty feet and then twenty feet, that's fifty feet. And you take fifty feet off, all three sides, you're taking my six point two eight.
Is it still your, is it still your intention to landscape?
Yes, always has been my intention to landscape. But again, on this side of the landscaping, I want to have the concrete, the hard surface road around it.
I think that was where part of the feud was, a feud.
No, I'm not asking to do away with the string at all. I just want the road to be within the thirty feet, rather than just thirty feet and then the road.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? We don't have a motion today. Um, yeah, we're, we're, we're in discussion now. Okay. Alderman.
I'll be ready for more.
Yeah.
Local proposal was removal of the condition of the rezoning tied to the old Highway Twenty-Five Mini Storage Project, AKA the Shrine of Building, related to the thirty-foot buffer requirement, currently from the thirty-foot buffer requirement to allow for paving as per the Alderman's motion.
Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Carver, Alderman Wind. He wishes to be on the.
Not.
Alderman Carver.
In your opinion, city attorney, is that sufficient for what Mr. Moreland is applying for? Does that suffice the, basically, the southwest part of down there, is able to include the road and the thirty-foot buffer?
That's a design decision that is above my grade, that would be a plant and department and engineering issue.
Mr. Sanders, do you wish to be on the question?
If this board says chooses, we got to do something, although, Mr. Moreland expressed that you should have at least ten feet of that area, be planted area, planted species of plants, but would be urgent for it to be covered altogether, to have ten, ten-foot permit, or, I can't say, grant an entire weight or an entire landscape plan in that it has to go through the tree of ash according to first.
would be up to the board to, uh, roll together, to, to put the permits, uh, or. I can't say, Grant, I can tire weight or, uh, the entire landscape plan in that it has to get through the tree advisory board first.
Alderman Carver, you still out of the board? Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further? You may.
Offer a friendly amendment to allow a ten foot buffer around, around the four landscaping and creative buffer.
All right, so Alderman Maynard, it's your proposed amendment, uh, to strike, uh, the previous condition, which was a thirty foot buffer requirement and replace it, uh, with a ten foot buffer requirement?
That's correct.
Alderman Wynn, do you accept that as friendly amendment?
I do.
All right, so without objection, uh, it will be amended. Is there anyone that objects to that amendment? Anyone that object?
I don't object to my question.
All right.
Um, so with that being a ten foot now buffer amendment to that, to that, uh, when they present their landscape plan in that ten feet, uh, how is that going to, to match what the landscape ordinance would require for a buffer zone? How is that going to be modified? Is it going to be modified for the tree count? Or is that going to be something that will have to go into the tree advisory board first?
The issue at hand is if the condition, uh, thirty foot buffer, if it be able to explore, is my understanding of the board has the authority to, to draw, make, uh, a change in approval, such as a ten foot buffer, or even have just been going back through the process to the, uh, tree advisory board. As far as like tree counts, uh, small tree counts, uh, and sprouts, I don't have, have the exact numbers.
If I'm, if I'm right down there prescribed for that thirty foot buffer for the ordinance, there is a prescribed in terms of, uh, not so much species, but tree counts, uh, types in terms of evergreen deciduous, those kind of things. If this goes from thirty foot, this in the books, to a ten foot, how is that going to be adjusted? And is it going to be communicated with Mr. Moreland and his representatives during design review of the landscape plan to make sure that, that there, that the buffer, that ten foot buffer is, is, uh, serving an adequate purpose?
One thing that might be problematic is by reducing the, the unit count for, per hundred feet of that buffer, it's a hundred and twenty units, where a shrub is one unit and a tree, and a tree is fifteen units. If you reduce the dimension from thirty to ten, you're trying to fit three times the amount of plants over intended to ten feet.
Uh, Alderman, if I, if I could jump in on, on the staff side, I, I don't know that we have the authority to vary anything within that ordinance before it comes back before you want the seven.
That's, that's my question.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if any, any authority staff is granted there.
Well, I'm not asking, I don't want to grant any authority. My question then is going to be, at that point, if it's ten, and we got to get those counts, is at that point going to be a, a bullet point, like we saw for the, the last one for that count, of what that means in terms of what you all are going to be recommending that this board approve based on that production size of, of buffer? So that can be clearly communicated with Mr. Moreland, so he knows what the expectations are and what the expectations of our existing landscape ordinance are. We expect variances to occur because there's always going to be different issues on different sites that have to be flexible. We have to be able to deal with that. And so I'm just asking if that's going to be able to be communicated in a, in a clear fashion. So at the end of the day, uh, we're making sure we have a, a, a project that, uh, that is one of our priorities.
All right, so to recap, uh, the friendly amendment was made, uh, and the motion, uh, or the, the amendment was, the friendly amendment proposal was accepted, uh, by the author, uh, of, of the motion. That would change, uh, the motion, uh, from striking the condition, uh, requiring thirty foot buffer now to, uh, striking the condition requiring thirty foot buffer and replacing it with a condition requiring a ten foot buffer. It has not been objected to. I will ask one more time, is there any objection? Seeing none, that is now the motion that you were discussing. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Alderman Wynn's motion as amended, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. Five in favor with one against this motion passed. The next matter on the agenda is a report from Chief Administrative Officer Taylor B. Adams and Personnel Director Randy Boyd on improved departmental guidelines for vehicles. You may.
But, and, and thanks to Alderman, uh, Mr. Boyd, what the name was, which was the last minute, maybe a visitation out of town. And so, uh, Ms. House, are you going to stand any later? We're sitting in this discussion, we're just.
All, all.
Thank you so much. First of all, C L, thank you so much for, as it relates to this one, Ms. Chacrifer, thank you for being here tonight. We'll be taking the following department heads first. C L Adams, Human Resource Director, Mr. Boyd, who is not with us tonight, Mr. Terry Kemp, Mr. Buddy Sanders, Ms. Emma Gandy, uh, Mr. Harmon Peters, and Mr. Edward Kemp. Give me a little bit of background, we'll go off into the other areas we've traveled. As a, as a board, we've been briefed on several infractions as it relates to the city vehicles by C L Adams. These infractions have been serious in nature. The C L, I have a couple of questions and, um, why can you answer those for me?
Sure.
C L, in your position as C L, have you ever briefed the mayor and board about misuse of city vehicles by employees?
I have.
Um, I board was briefed last year in May that some of the employees of sanitation and environmental services had hit two of the sanitation departments. Did you brief our board regarding that?
I did.
Is it true that board action was taken?
Uh, yes, all.
Okay. In February of this year, is it true that the city vehicle was reported stolen?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Is it true that that vehicle has never been recovered?
That's true.
Mr. Clemmons, I gave you a document earlier this evening. Will you forward that to the C L for me, please? Ms. Adams, will you take a moment to read that document for me? Are you familiar with it?
I am.
Thank you. In April of this year, did an Alderman submit a letter to Human Resource Officer, Mr. Randy Boyd, regarding misuse of a city vehicle by employee that was CC'd with your name on it?
Yes, all.
Okay. Who else was CC'd on that document? And please don't call the other department head name if he hears on it.
Uh, the, the mayor and the vice mayor were also top of the, of the top.
What was the infraction that was stated in that letter?
Uh, this refers to, uh, to a city employee, uh, being observed, uh, in uniform in a city vehicle entering, entering on the, uh, liquor store.
Okay, so let me make sure that I did say that. And that letter is submitted by the Alderman. Um, and that letter is dated, um, April twenty, April twenty-third. That Alderman states, he or she witnessed a city employee enter to a liquor store, South of Town, at approximately eleven twenty-two AM.
That is correct.
Okay. Is it true that once the, the matter was taken, it took more than two, was addressed to you, that it took more than two hours to determine who the driver of the vehicle was?
That is correct.
Okay. Is it true that the board was briefed on May fifth regarding this infraction?
Yes, all.
Okay. Is that employee's field capacity?
None.
Okay. And isn't it true that no board action was required?
That is correct.
Is it true, um, is it true that during the third week of April of this year, a city employee used city time and the city vehicle with city equipment on the back of it for approximately one hour and thirty minutes to conduct personal business at a county office?
That is correct.
Okay. Is it true that you briefed the mayor and board regarding this matter?
I did.
Okay. Is it true that no board action had to be taken?
That is correct.
Is it, is it true that this person is no longer employed with our city?
Yes, all.
Thank you so much. Have a statement I'd like to read to the mayor, vice mayor, and board members. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board members. These are serious infections that have created, that have been created by our city employees and city vehicles. On May twenty-seventh, I requested to meet with C L Adams, Human Resource Officer Randy Boyd, Mr. Terry Kemp, Mr. Buddy Sanders, Ms. Emma Gandy, Mr. Edward Kemp, and Mr. Harmon Peters, so that they could create vehicle guidelines for their prospective employees. These have been submitted. Each department will have a log in, log out sheet. Every department has inventoried vehicles that are signed in. I'm glad this has been done because one department shared with me that two of his vehicles in his department were without license plates. I realize this is not a panacea for the misuse of city vehicles, but at least they start. And it perhaps in a message to city employees that infractions as it relates to city vehicles will not be tolerated. At no one time should it have taken two hours to determine who was driving a city vehicle that had been used for someone to go into a liquor store. Had some form of check-in, check-in and check-out law, and all of our vehicles have been inventoried with plate numbers. This should, this should have been available in less than thirty minutes. C L, at this time, would you be able to bring out for any comments? I know that Alderman Wynn has suggested that we put, um, some information in there regarding texting and driving. Would you like to speak to that?
Sure, um, Alderman, you, you pretty much hit everything I would have said. Uh, the, the one thing that I, that I, that was sort of a late addition to this was a recommendation from Alderman Wynn that, uh, upon the implementation of the petition you're driving on July first, this, uh, this vehicle driver certification be updated to include that information. It's a, it's an administrative document, we certainly plan to do that. Uh, the, the only other thing that I might add is that we anticipate that we'll have all of our drivers sign this document. And you would say that we have current faculty in the box.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, who's on the board, have you any questions? If they are none, uh, C L, again, to those department heads that I thanked earlier, again, this is not a panacea, but our employees have to be accountable for those vehicles. I expect them to be. I'm going to hone my thoughts on the telephone calls that I've been getting regarding to, uh, an article that Alex produced today, with people telling off on our city employees. I want them to be responsible for our vehicles. Although these have not been substituted for us, look, don't go visit your girlfriend. Don't go to places that you should not be going in our city vehicles. Our taxpayers are not paying for that. Mr. Mayor, I yield for at this time.
Mr. Mayor, this vehicle, uh, we stand this little issue on this.
Yes.
Back in my first term, uh, just elected you on, on the board, um, back then, in three months and seven, I think you probably remember how that personal use policy came up. And there was some strong sentiment there. And it was a strong feeling, strongness. So, um, I supported it then, for the personal use, a lot of history had been since day one. So I was willing to take the time to talk about that, Mr. Mayor. I just thought that, you know, we, this, this board of politics, keep rolling.
All right, the next matter, Alderman Wynn.
So quickly, what are the changes to the existing policy? What are we adding?
Uh, no, no, no. The only thing that we're, yeah, as it relates to our existing policy, Alderman attracts exactly what the state called. Uh, the only thing that we're, that we're, uh, that we are asking, uh, or that we plan to add administratively would be, um, an improved reporting structure, which I'm pleased to report is something we, we've been working on. I think, uh, it's a good thing that it's one that, uh, it'd be great, I have to mention, uh, Joanna McQuarren in the, uh, in the clerk's office that has, had already been working on this, uh, on this issue of tying tag numbers to, uh, title numbers and the vehicle number. But, but again, that, we'd only really been working on that for three years. We have a number of vehicles that are, that are fifteen, twenty years old and, and, uh, we're, we're thankful to the board's attention to this matter because it is certainly doing us the support that we give on the staff side to advance those efforts, which I think you'll notice in many of the sheets that are attached to the side of the packet where, where, uh, where departments included a listing of that. But, but no, we, uh, Randy and I talked about it and, uh, and thought that this was a good time to have our, to add administratively, uh, a document, just as we did, that we had, we have, we've had a few of these issues over the past few months, where we'll have our drivers, uh, certified, they will be adhering to our policy on this going forward, beyond just handling the personal policy manual with the higher. And so, so we're not asking for reaction, we're, we've just basically taken our, our policies and created a, a driver certification form, one edition of code to make that July one, when the law comes back, something related to texting and driving.
Any further questions, or comments, or questions? All right, seeing none, the next matter before you is a report from Chief Administrative Officer Taylor B. Adams on the city of Storm Bull Emergency Notification Plan.
Sure. Let me see. Uh, this is, uh, a, uh, a report that requested by, uh, by Alderman Wynn. Alderman, appreciate the opportunity to talk about this program. It is, uh, it is something, uh, that has, uh, is one of, one of the support emergency notification features that we have in our city. Um, and, uh, given that there are some changes in, uh, in emergency management at the county level, great time to talk about this program. Um, we, uh, most recently applied for a siren grant, uh, with, uh, to work with, uh, I guess, uh, the new director of the county is Shankfeld, who processes her, and who needs still until, I guess, June thirtieth. Jim Britt was the director, we worked with Jim to, uh, to apply for a grant to start changing out some of our older sirens with newer ones throughout town. Um, uh, those, those are up and, and operating as best we know. Some of the things that we perhaps did not do as good a job, uh, on the front as we could have is, uh, sort of making sure that we had systems in place to identify, um, when error message for, messages were being kicked back from sirens in test cycles to the controller, A E M S, basically setting up the communication network at our office so that, uh, so that we can make sure that everything was operating. So it has taken us a minute to get, uh, to get all of those fully operated from one, one siren in particular in your ward that we've now had, uh, it's a brand new siren that we've now had serviced four times, uh, uh, has been, uh, has, uh, has been sort of the, uh, the main offender, I would say. But, uh, but through some recent conversations that the clerk, uh, facilitated with Precision Communications who installed this, uh, we, we believe that we have identified that and we are confident. I had a, had a very, uh, very encouraging conversation with the new director at the county level today. And really, uh, certainly we thank Mr. Britt for the great job that he has done over the years. But I'm really excited, uh, that Shank has started his tenure. Again, uh, I think we're having a great relationship, going to, going to work well. And we'll, uh, uh, we'll be doing a much more thorough job going forward of ensuring that, uh, that we're getting error messages as it relates to the system to the right bullets so that we can deal with batteries or, um, uh, sync, sync errors, things of that nature. Uh, as it relates to the remainder of our system, where it functions, as you hear, uh, on, I guess, the first two, two every month, it do. System does work, but, uh, but some of our sirens do have some age on them. Uh, some of our sirens had to be, uh, as part of this most recent grant, FEMA came in and had us actually move some of our sirens. So we have heard from the, the residents that were affected by a siren perhaps being moved from a location closer to their home to another, to another place in the city. Uh, we're working with our, our Prince Planning Development District to, to con, uh, to continue to search for funds to pursue a, uh, another round of siren grant application. We think that there, or we hope that there is a, that there is some opportunity that we'll be able to take advantage of in the very near future. If not, though, just, just know that we are, uh, that through our new collaboration with the county, well, uh, new director with, through our collaboration with the new director of the county, would be a better way to say that. I anticipate that we will continue looking for opportunities to expand and update our system. And as soon as they are available, we will take advantage of them.
Alderman, thank you. Mr. Adams, I mentioned to you, on one occasion, around some inquiries from constituents over in the northern, most section of town and here at the hospital.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I, in, in speaking with you, you referenced, and this on one occasion, that your siren that was moved inadvertently due to some type of, uh, language that was included, it's on tape, or, or by that siren should not have been moved from that high profile location. And so what, what is your status of that, uh, trying to correct that?
Yes, sir. Right there, we, you, you think that in that FEMA grant, there were, there were some precise latitudinal and longitude coordinates that's, that's being approved for the location of the new, of the new sirens. Um, and yes, that's, there were two sirens that were, uh, that were moved from original locations to new locations based on the coordinates FEMA approved. And those are the sirens that we are working to replace now, um, through, as we, uh, as we continue to monitor the, uh, siren grant program that, oh, that's a big name that we're, that we're looking at, FEMA.
Uh, well, we're communicating with FEMA, but it has a FEMA grant because there was some, a disaster declaration. That, that, that.
And we're hoping that there are, that there are, that there are funds remaining that are adequate to allow for, uh, for, uh, for us to remedy that situation in the very near future. Is an application. It is an application the county would have to make, but, uh, but, uh, but Miss Spencer is speaking, but, but Mr. Felton, Andy, and we're, we're all, we're all fully exploring that opportunity right now, and we'll take action on that in the near future.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any further questions or comments?
So thank for the report, um, I had heard recently there is a, uh, siren that rolls out of town that's had not been operational, you know, fire ride or whatever, tested. Uh, the one I'm aware of, and that we've heard about for something like a year and a half, is, uh, on Country Club Road, serves as Country Club Estates, South of Montgomery, Country Club Road, South Side of Green Line, um, we've had precision, I believe, about three times.
We have.
Fifteen hundred dollar pop, and for whatever reason, we're still having, this is supposedly a huge siren.
It's brand-new, that's right.
Um, I also understand that these sirens have backup batteries in each one of them, when the power goes out, and they still function.
Yes.
Uh, during inclement weather. And these batteries, just like any other battery, a couple of years or so, they, they go bad, they corrode, and the whole system shuts down. Do we currently have any type of maintenance ready?
We, we do not, but one of the conversations that I had, or, or as part of the conversation that I had with Phil today, I'm, I, I anticipate that we will be communicating more frequently on these matters, and as it relates to, uh, and this will go back to, to the D unit we have with Precision, these new sirens, uh, do a great job of communicating back to the head, inter, information in the event of a failure to do, they do a fantastic job of communicating the type of failure back to the head unit. When those failures happen, the, um, knowing what that, uh, knowing exactly what failed will give us a better idea of how to address those on a per-unit basis. Uh, where, and, uh, and so our, our first plan is to try and handle that in-house, given the cost of, because annual maintenance is a, uh, annual maintenance is an eighteen to twenty thousand dollar per year commitment. And so, in the hope that we can manage that through the error messages, um, just calling out Precision when it was absolutely necessary, we're, we're optimistic that we can manage that number lower in the event, we'll know very quickly if we're, we're not going to be capable of doing that, in which case we'll, we'll have to, to start exploring other options to maintain the system. But we're, but our, our first attempt is going to be to, to work more closely with our friends at, at Emergency Management to ensure that we're, uh, that we're giving the right information after those tests, so that we can take adequate action going forward.
Who receives those error messages?
That they go to the controller at, at Emergency Management.
Was, uh, Precision, will they prove you to the data that came back to the Emergency Management on those chip, those tests?
I do not know the answer to that. I, I would hope so, but I don't know the answer specifically.
But if they weren't, they could not address the situation.
That's correct.
Um, so you think eighteen to twenty thousand dollars a year to have this serviced on a regular routine basis?
Please, is that, was that the number?
Well, it's not, uh, it feels like it's service, you, you have to completely replace all of the batteries, all these old, everything that needs.
Right now, I can hear.
That, that's right, right. Right now, if, if there's an issue with batteries or whatnot, the, the electric department has been great to help us as, as needed, but only if we know the sender there. And so, uh, and so that's, it's, 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 uh...
Where would this fall in the budget?
But as you said, it's, there's...
Anything in the budget line up for this topic? Where would it fall? If we put something?
I mean, we, we would have to establish a line for emergency management maintenance.
What part? Community development.
Some, you, that's mine. But some of your community development or public safety would be a, a first step, but...
The reason I wanted Taylor to speak on this tonight, this is a, a serious issue that we can't put our head under a rock, and all the boards are aware of what's going on, and the public, you know, they rely on this, this three-point, power is out, they rely on this. I think what we're gonna be remiss is the board, we're not addressing this, the building site was coming up, and I won't see this on the building somewhere?
Yes.
And what a plan to address it.
Excellent. Thank you all.
Any further questions or comments for Mr. Grant? Seeing none, the next matter on the agenda is a report from Community Development Director Buddy Sanders on the administrative...
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and myself, and, um, Chief Administrative Officer, um, Dad, sat down in that, but, uh, Deputy Sergeant Officer Lyles, who gave us a rundown of, um, current cases. Um, and generally what takes place is every year, we have a vehicle, okay, some same people, CEO, or whatever, and I notice when we send to the, mm, that's what takes place, never notice, we send to a, a fine. Uh, but generally when they receive the, notice that issue and go to municipal court, that is where in general, where we find that the, um, property owner will react, and either pay the fine and also take care of the, the violation. Uh, currently, uh, we have a lot of cases that are in that gray area. We never want to send anyone to municipal court, uh, that they will take care of the problem. Um, as of right now, we have no cases to go to municipal court, because generally, uh, Mr. Lyles and this, uh, Lyles, they would do a great job of working with the public, get them to the point of taking care of the situation. Uh, but should it need to go, the case need to go to municipal court, uh, we've met with, uh, the municipal judge, uh, the staff, uh, and we've also had, um, Mr. Lyles sworn in as an officer, so he issued an affidavit.
So just, was it good about you?
I'm studying here. And we had quite a number of cases, but when the letter went out regarding their case could go to municipal court, we saw a lot of action of, of those problems being...
Well, there just is one, you know, they're reacting to it, and...
Correct. There is a process in place now.
So it's been successful?
It, it has, and, and this is the time of year where, like Buddy just said, where, where our efforts ramp up, and, and some of you may have seen Mr. Lyles in your ward, um, if, if, just know that, uh, that he is out and about every day, uh, diligently seeking, or just making sure that we're staying on top of, uh, of, uh, properties, or maybe getting that, with the letter in front.
That's, that was the next question. I'd like to, you know, if you're starting to do it, that's great, but I, this is the year, peak growing season, right? Oh, the grass is right in. I would love to see him being proactive, and, uh, a lot of times the neighbor man I want to report, over the neighbor next door, but who's being proactive on their, not keeping in necessarily on just the repeated, but there are other, you know, other areas around town that, uh, where they're overgrown, and you see unsightly things, or outside of the country, uh, need to be brought to their attention. I'd love to see them be aggressive in that area, not just wait on, um, a citizen report.
And, you know, I would also like to thank the board for their support with the Woodwork College property, which is a dilapidated banking property. The fire department is going to use the, uh, uh, facility as control burn and a training exercise within the next two weeks, so that, uh, I saw, uh, will soon be back. And, and board, I might also like to commend Mr. Sanders, uh, while I'm here, Vice Mayor, to thank you for what you said a moment ago, it certainly is open, uh, for, for business. We're seeing, uh, we're, 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 his staff is working through more developments than I believe this city has ever seen in one time in its history. Um, and, uh, and they're doing a fantastic job of, uh, of, uh, of both keeping projects moving forward at the staff level, but it, but it sure is done within the law of the government's staff. Uh, as it relates to development, we, we, uh, just know that we do, we do understand that, like I say, with this much construction, some, uh, some of, uh, some of our contractors are not as sophisticated as others. We know that Mr. Lyles and our building officials are making sure, are, are taking every effort to ensure that streets are kept clean, that it's still fencing as of, and that lots are maintained while, uh, while construction is underway. We appreciate the support you've given his team, uh, to make sure that those events are geared down, so thank you for that.
Just have one more question for you, essentially what can you share with me at this time about the status of the, the family dollar, the located on one eighty-two? Vice Mayor, where, where I last understood, we had, uh, there was an issue of contracting some of the borings that they had done, and there was a stop, they, there was, there was a work stop, it's related to that, but Buddy, have you...
Yes. Um, the original contractor, uh, out of Mason, Georgia, was, uh, dispossessed by, uh, the property owner. Uh, there's also the issue pertaining to, uh, the soul test being connected incorrectly, that has been corrected. However, uh, the property owner has retained another contractor out of Birmingham. We've met, uh, with contractors, you can see the owners, and, uh, process of essentially, uh, applying for the same permits that the, uh, previous contractor got up for, just in their hands with their insurance.
And Vice Mayor, to the concern that I've heard from, from, from a number of people around town, the, uh, the proof site plan that is here in the city does not allow for the open ditch that is there immediately off of the sidewalk, home one eighty-two, and, uh, and our, uh, both code enforcement and building official, um, are, they cannot allow them to start from the burger until that is piped and covered per site plan, which the Vice Mayor...
Any other questions to Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, gentlemen.
We are now down to our section of the venue for the approval of the claim document. Our gentleman, three votes approve the claim document, their second. Second, the motion is second, that the claim document be approved, there is discussion. All those who say aye?
Aye.
Oppose is nay. I have the motion secured. This takes us down to personnel, uh, with regard to the manner of the fire call, their motion. And Chief, I saw you said, have any questions want to come out? Sir?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Uh, motion by the gentleman from five, for approval of the hiring of Jonathan Kane, Christopher Keys, Michael Morrow, Glenn Wolan, who feels the vacant position for five, five in five of the park, presents, uh, to win your probation period. You have a second.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second for approval of these hires from the five of the park in the discussion. Yes, sir.
I would just like to ask, Vice Mayor, to you, if you speak, you, you pulled it off early, I think, if there was an issue, you weren't aware of?
We can hold on with the discussion. Okay. Um, any, this, any other discussion? Um, all those who say aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay. I have the motion secured. Yes, sir. And we just came to personnel. We're down to the closed session.
All right. So that will conclude the open session portion of the agenda. Uh, you have the heads of minds for executive session, have you considered it? Your motion's been closed session. So, motion has been made, followed by Wendy on the closed session, to determine whether it can be for executive session. Your second. Motion's been seconded, followed by Little off the Wendy, which is picking up... Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying not all, or maybe, but you might be saying aye? All who oppose, would you probably say nay? Imagine fully passes. This time, I'll ask you, public, quick premises, if the board can get closed session deliberated, if there's a need for any closing.